So it looks like we're ready to go. So I'm gonna ask everyone to quiet down and we'll call this meeting to order. We're starting. We're starting over there too. We're still starting. And so, welcome to the, one of the two monthly meetings for Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. I'll call the meeting to order. I'll welcome everyone who's here and we'll take roll call. I know that Michael Smith was not able to be here tonight and
Thank everyone else.
Everyone else is here, I think. So that's the roll call. So we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Now we move on to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, possibly revise, and otherwise approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustee to either modify or change the order of the items listed on the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll approve the agenda as it stands and has been printed. So item number four is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October 9th, which are found beginning on page five. Any corrections to those minutes or additions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting from October 9th? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Second by trustee Sturbis. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 9th, please indicate by raising your hand. And Lenora, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move on to public comment regarding non-agenda items. This is the time in our meeting where if someone wants to bring anything to our attention that would fall within the purview of the Missoula County Public Schools, and we're not going to be discussing it tonight, but you want to tell us about it, that we allow public comment at the beginning and end of every meeting on the non-agenda items. Since they're not on our agenda under the Open Meetings Act, we can't discuss them tonight. We'd have to notice it up. Did you have a question, honey? Oh, I'm sorry. So for non-agenda items, if you want to tell us about them and if it's appropriate at a later point to put it on, then we put it on the agenda. But then the public has noticed so that they know to come and if they want to talk more about it, that they can be there. And then there'd be a dialogue with the, among the trustees and additional public comment. So is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing no one walking to the podium, then we'll move on to 6A. It's our Community Connection. And so I know that we have Paradigm Architects here. And so I don't know if you want to introduce them or Burley wants to introduce them?
Yeah, thanks. So tonight Greg Midget from Paradigm Architect V2 or 3? Is it 3 now? V2. We're presenting the Porter Plan. They started designing this project many, many months ago and we're continuing to still design this project. But I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised with what this project's gonna look like. And with that, I will turn it over to Greg.
My name is Greg Midget. I'm with Paradigm Architects. And we have been working with the, on CS Porter, on the remodel addition over there. Coming around, if there's not enough of those, I have a few more if we ran out. But this is just a hard copy of what I'm presenting. And then, of course, we'll leave the digital version too, so it can be reviewed. It may be a little difficult to read up on the screen there. Yeah, let's see. Can we get it to be full view? If you hit up the view... No, 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 no. No, if you hit the view at the top, there you go. It hit full page, full screen. Perfect. That gets a little bit bigger. So we're working away on the remodel addition. So I'm just gonna present kind of what are, where we're going and where the design is going on this. As you can see, their construction budget is $4 million. And we're working with that and configuring, we're in the process of configuring alternates and so forth, so we can make sure and meet that budget. As far as the site plan goes, we can see that here. Some of the bigger improvements that we're making are rerouting and making a new bus loop. And you can see that bus loop in kind of the northwest corner of the property as it wraps around. And that is becoming a really good improvement for them, isolating the buses. Right now, the buses stack up on 26th Street there. And it frees up a lot more parent parking, getting a lot of that traffic away from Reserve Street is the big goal there. Along with that, it also creates, the blue shades are all additions. So a large entry addition off of that crux of the bus loop there is that will become the primary entrance to the school. And all the admin and offices and main secure entry all will be located there. As you can see, the other two smaller additions to the south there are off of their music additions. Other site improvements is, again, there'll be expanded parent drop-off along the street. Slight reconfigurations, kind of consolidating the playground. Right now, the swing set actually sits, let's see if this works. The swing set sits right out here, kind of out, out away from the building. And so we're relocating that up in this corner right here. And so the Potire Playground now will be contained in this area. This whole area here will be kind of for future expansion, potential future parking. And, you know, isolated school events could, supervised could be happen, happening over there. Kind of moving on and I'll, we'll come back to any questions that you would have. So looking at the building itself, the shaded colors, again, the blue are additions that are occurring. And then the yellow area are remodeled square footage in the footprint of the building. So the major building improvements that are taking place is, of course, the main new entry. You know, up in here where all the new admin, principal's office, nurses' station, all that's moving up here, conference. And then that will be the secure entry, you know, secure vestibule, lockdown security. Other security improvements that will also be taking place is we're going through. And there are a number of doors that compartmentalize the building. And we're gonna add hardware there to upgrade security and have some lockdown considerations made. New fire protection elements to the project. Partially, the building is fire sprinkler right now. The project will fully fire sprinkler the entire building. And the entire fire alarm system will be upgraded with a voice evacuation system that's required. HVAC, again, is kind of a global building improvement that's being made. A lot of the original building is from 1966, that whole area. And all kind of the octagonal pods will get new, brand-new HVA systems, brand-new boilers. And the system will actually be some forced air, so we'll be able to bring some fresh air into that. So then, you know, the primary gist of what is happening is with the moving of the admin. You know, right now, the admin sits kind of right in the middle of the building and right where the central yellow spot is. So once we move that, we're actually able to create a lot more classroom space. We're moving the PLT in there, a new computer lab is there, and a new sixth-grade classroom will take up that space. And allowing every grade to kind of expand a little bit. With those rooms that are coming from will be renovated into standard eighth-grade classrooms. That's up at the top of the sheet where those couple of classrooms are labeled. Other major improvements is, you know, in general with the front entry moving, we're improving some circulation. One aspect of the project is to create this whole new corridor that kind of sneaks from the new addition down through and into the core of the building. That that will become a thoroughfare and a hallway. And then, so really, this, this will be kind of a circular circulation that kind of ties the new admin into the entire building. Major improvements are happening with the music program. So the music program is all in this wing here. The existing band choir and orchestra rooms are gonna be completely remodeled. Actually, a hallway comes out of there. The general music comes out of there. And so we're able to expand the square footage they have. We're creating a number of new practice rooms. That's what all those lineup, the small rooms for the most part are, practice rooms. And two small additions, this front entry addition is a secure addition with an entry. They have morning practices that they want that to have access to, but it'll be locked down to the rest of the building. And then we're moving and creating a general music room in this other addition. So, you know, that is pretty much the gist of the, of the project. I guess one last thing to talk about would be the, the old entry, main entry is here. And that'll be renovated into a nighttime use gym entrance and also a couple of offices. So that no longer will be the primary entrance.
Thanks. Any questions, Greg? Trustee Lorenzen?
Will they have capacity to put on orchestra concerts and things? Will they have seating and stuff to be able to do that?
They do do that. You know, it's, it's interesting. What I, what they have done in the past is they've had all their concerts in, in the old gym here. They do, actually, these are brand-new bleachers that just went in. And that was the bleachers that came over from Washington, actually. They're being installed. I don't know if they're quite done yet. But, so the capacity of this gym has increased. And that was one of the bigger issues of having concerts in that gym was that. But with the increase of the seating, I think actually the orchestra teacher has talked about, he has a connection directly to that gym, that I think there will be performances there. And we are actually looking at some acoustic upgrades in that, in that space.
Any other questions? Trustee?
Thanks. I imagine this was a project that took a lot of head scratching.
It still does.
It's a complicated building. As a new parent in the building myself, I will tell you that it is really difficult to figure out where to go for anything. And so I love the way that the new entry looks and the, there's an enormous need for parking resolution and for the better bus lane and all of that. I am curious about the segmenting off of that big piece of land that isn't gonna be used for particularly anything at this point. I'm sure lots of people have lots of thoughts about what that might turn into. But unused space that used to be more or less playground is always a concern to me to take any of that away from use by students and classrooms. So before we consider adding a big paved parking lot, and this is more comment, I guess, to us, I'd love to think about, you know, gardens and other outdoor functions that would be useful for middle schoolers.
And that is the conversations that we've had. The principals had some ideas of that. I think part of the issue's been, it's been kind of a separated area that's unsupervised in a lot of ways. And so that, for security reasons, it hasn't been ideal. But definitely, it's usable space and green space is good.
Any other questions or comments? I have one question, just because going over there to pick up art that was donated from their wonderful art program, I couldn't find anything. In fact, even I didn't even know which entrance was the entrance to come in. Will there be signage so that everyone understands?
There will be, yes. And that's actually something that we're discussing right now, is what, where to go with signage. And that is part of the controversy, because we, we want to get away from Reserve Street. And so that entrance does it, but it, it tucks it away. So what we're really kind of looking at is putting some good signage. We have the sign out here on the corner right now. But we're looking at signage even kind of around the back and especially at this corner here to direct people into the core, right? But it, that is something that we definitely have to address and make sure people find that main entrance.
Any other board comments? Any public comment on this? Seeing none? Oh.
I was just wondering if Greg could show us some of those 3D models?
Yeah. It was good to get the questions there, but let's dive into some 3D images of what the, what this looks like here. So this is kind of an aerial shot of that backside. There's our big green space, you know, space. One thing that we will, we will be paving an area this, because this area is kind of taking out some of the asphalt playground area. So we will be paving back some of that, so we have some of that playground paved area. But we can kind of see what this looks like with the, and we're really trying to get this arched entry roof to kind of go after the look of the existing building with a couple of barrel vaults. And provisions are being made there for cost to try to cut that down a little bit. But we're, we're really looking at trying to keep that as we go down. So this is kind of a look down, this would be kind of the main look down, the walkway going into that main entrance from 26th. So one critical thing is the, is views out of that entrance that we have it now, so where the, the staff can look directly out. Receptionists can look out and see through that main secure vestibule and see the front of the building. Right now, they're completely landlocked with the way it's set up. And that's just kind of a front view there. And a side view. And that's what I have. Further comments or questions? Sure?
Well, well, not, if you just clarify, so on the far left of that, the structure, the structure with the curved roof and all the glass, is that their library right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, I can, if I go, I'll go back to that. That aerial kind of places you pretty well. So yeah, the library's the, on the left there, the far left. Back there. So then that's the multipurpose room up above. And the whole addition kind of nestles in between there.
Any other questions? Is there more presentation?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm sorry. I didn't intend to cut you off. It's just that questions popped up. So thank you so much. Is there any public comment on the second part of the presentation? Seeing none? Well, thank you for being here and being our Community Connection. Now we move on to reports and announcements. So 7A is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report for the month of September. And we see this included in the packet on a regular basis and it starts beginning at page 10. Then 7B, our announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. I would direct your attention to page 11 in the packet. And for the viewing audience, I would like to highlight a few important dates. It's hard to believe we'll be into November before we know it. November, our first regular board meeting will be Tuesday, November 13th. Our second regular board meeting will be Tuesday, November 27th. Looking ahead, as we move to December, we'll have a regular board meeting December 11th. Our second December board meeting would fall on Tuesday, December 25th. I thought I should poll the trustees and see how many want to meet on Tuesday, December 25th. So it's our recommendation that we cancel the second regularly scheduled board meeting for December. We are also in the process of preparing for trustee visits. The first visit to three elementary schools will occur this Thursday. Will begin at 8:30 a.m. at Lowell, followed by Hawthorne at 9:30 and Franklin at 10:30. Then the following Thursday, excuse me, November 7th, I, yeah, that is the following Thursday, I believe. No, Tuesdays, excuse me. We'll go to the VoAg program at 9:30, followed by Garden City Harvest's new facility on River Road at 10:45. And we haven't in the past gone to the Ag Center. And we thought this was an opportunity to also pair that with Garden City Harvest, since those are important programs in the district. Just a couple of other dates that I would highlight. Thursday, November 8th and Friday, November 9th are referenced on the calendars as parent-teacher conference days. That's also significant because those days, Cold Springs Elementary will have a revised conference schedule. And they will actually move to their new facility on Thursday, November 8th. And Monday, November 12th will be the first day of classes for the new Jeanette Rankin Elementary School. We'll allow the contractors to have up until whatever time they need to finish moving, then staff to take over the facility. So we won't do a ribbon cutting or formal dedication of any type. But once they're established in the building, we will set a date to have a community open house and invite certainly all trustees and the public to attend. And that concludes my report.
Thanks. And now we're on to 7C, which are announcements from trustees. Trustee Wake?
I'd like to thank Diane Lorenz and Marcia Holland and, sorry, Heidi Kendall for coming to my last meeting as president of MTSBA and giving me a beautiful array of flowers. And I do appreciate them being there. Thank you very much.
And that kind of stole my thunder, because I also wanted to announce that our vice chair on the high school side was the, for the past year, but even beyond that, and it's continuing into the next year, has been in a leadership position for the state School Board Association, MTSBA. And so she was the president for this last year, which meant that she had a lot of additional responsibilities as a trustee representing our district, but also representing all the trustees around the state. And that's why we wanted to make sure that we were there in person to thank her for all the work that she's done, not just for our district, but for everyone in the state. And we really appreciated it. And just for members in the audience who are noticing, there's a lot of name tags down this side, but there's not people sitting there. We have student trustees from each of the high, urban high schools, also from Sealy-Swan, who usually participate by telephone, and Willard Alternative High School Program, who attend the first meeting of the month and give us reports on activities that are going on in the high schools, so that they can see how a board meeting is run. They can understand what issues we consider. And then Maddie is the amazing Maddie Braun, because Sentinel has a student trustee who is willing to commit to coming to every meeting, whether it's a long meeting, a meeting up in Sealy, and the second meeting of the month, where we tend to try and talk more about financial aspects of things rather than curricular and teaching and learning kind of things. So we want to especially give a shout out to Maddie for being here. Yet again, thank you so much. That concludes my announcements. Anybody else? Trustees?
I just had one quick question about the site visits. I'm just confused. Is November 7th, isn't it Wednesday? So is it Wednesday or Thursday that it is? I just wanted to clarify.
Is Thursday the 8th?
Yeah.
So I believe it is the 8th. We'll clarify that.
Okay. Now we move on to item number eight, which is the Consent Agenda. The way a consent agenda works in a procedural fashion is that we often see items that come to us on a regular basis that really don't require much trustee discussion. So we can put them on a consent agenda and we just vote on the items on the consent agenda without any board discussion. However, the public is free to comment on any items on the consent agenda. And if any trustee wants to have a discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda, any single trustee can ask for the item to come off the consent agenda. And then we'll have a discussion as we would have with any other item on the agenda that's up for an action. So with that, is any, everyone's okay with the consent agenda? Seeing that they are, then there are two. And we will have to vote separately, because one is an elementary and secondary action item. And A2 is an elementary action item only. And just to explain further, since our school board is a bit confusing, there are four of us who represent the feeder districts and we represent, and we vote on high school issues only. Because we represent, the, are, the schools that we represent have kids that go to school in an independent K-8 school. The rest of the boards, that's four of us, the other seven, actually represent all the kids in school, both high school and elementary school. So those trustees, we tend to use the phrase elementary trustee, but they really vote on everything. And then there's a second, smaller set that only vote on high school issues. So with that being said, the first topic on the consent agenda is to approve the Revenue and Expenditure Report. Is there a motion to approve it? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second by trustee Duggar. Any public discussion or comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the attached revenue and expenditure reports for September, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come to A2, which is an elementary action item. And it is to approve out-of-district attendance agreements that are found on the attachment on page 20. Is there a motion to approve the attached out-of-district attendance agreements by an elementary trustee? By trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Second by trustee Newbold. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the attached out-of-district attendance agreements, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to the elementary trustees present. Now we move on to Finance and Operations. And so attached in the packet, beginning on page 21, is an update to Board Policy 3310, which is titled Student Discipline. As the board members recall, but the public may not have been at that other meeting, we had a proposed revision of Board Policy 3310 that dealt with student discipline. And the board trustees had a lot of discussion. And so Megan Morris is here. She is our board counsel. So she made revisions based on the recommendations and the discussions that we had had. So I don't know if you want to walk us through the revisions you made, and then I think they'll generate a little bit more discussion.
Good evening, everyone. I fully foresee that there's going to be more discussion. Because as I went to try to revise the policy based upon the board comment, I had questions that arose. So part of what I'm gonna ask from you tonight is some direction on some language where, like I said, I thought I had clarity and I didn't. And that's my fault. So the first page, page 21 of 3310, the revision that I made is in the, I believe, six bullet point. And it's the definition of those other items, not a firearm or a criminal definition of a weapon, but anything else that could be considered a weapon. And based upon the board direction from the previous meeting, the request was to include some sort of intent, that it wasn't just anything that was possessed, it was that it had a specific intent. So when I was revising the language, I was looking at, well, what, what are we trying to modify within the policy? What had been talked about was putting it at the very end, including look-alike weapons or any other object, device, or instrument which through its use is capable of inflicting injury. But when I went back through the language, what I questioned was, what's the intent supposed to modify? Is it the first part, any other object that reasonably could be considered or used as a weapon? Or is it that second part, which is the look-alike weapons? It's why I included the language about with the purpose to commit a criminal offense or violation of board policy towards the beginning. But I can certainly understand a difference of opinion. So I, I am leaving that out for the board to give some direction. And I don't know if, Mark, at this point, you want to step in?
So we had some conversation at Cabinet this morning about this particular reference. And I took a stab at revisions based on those conversations. And there are two items on an addendum that I left at each of your positions today. Both in Board Policy 3310, which is the student policy, and then Board Policy 5224, which is the employee policy, we wanted to have the same language represented. So what you find on the sheet of paper is there twice. As Megan referenced, the question about intent and what does it modify was something that needed to be addressed. And what I attempted to do in the revision of language here, if you look at the second underlined portion, it does reference any look-alike weapons or any object, device, or instrument possessed with the intent, what, excuse me, with the purpose to commit a criminal offense or inflict injury. So that modifier was, again, directed toward any object, device, or instrument possessed. So I think we accomplished what Megan was discussing with this potential language revision. But I'd like you all, obviously, to look at it with a critical eye and see if it meets your needs with regard to the fifth bullet point in Board Policy 3310. And then we'll talk about it again for its inclusion in Board Policy 5224 in just a few moments.
So I can continue going through revisions or if you want to talk about that particular item, it's up to you?
Yeah. Why don't we talk about that now, since we just had your explanation and then Superintendent Thane's? So do the trustees have any questions? So do the trustees have any questions or any preference for either the suggested language that came out of the cabinet meeting versus what Megan was trying to work on?
Can you explain the, the use of the word purpose rather than intent?
The reason why I use the term purpose was based upon the discussion at the previous board meeting where we were looking at the definition on page, well, it's listed on page 22 of the policy that was from the criminal definition that talks about the purpose. If you look at the underlying language about what a weapon is, that term used the purpose. And my recollection of the trustee discussion was to mirror that language, so that's why I use that term.
I actually had a similar question, and whether the word intent carries that kind of criminal law and order meaning to it. You know, because, because something could be brought without actual intent to commit a crime, but that someone might want to have it in case. And in that sense, there's no intent to use it, right, to hurt somebody. And yet, its purpose for being carried is in case you have to use it. There's kind of like this, they didn't bring it aggressively, but, yeah, I mean, and really, if this is something that came before us, that use of the word intent might actually be really important there legally?
Well, I would direct, frankly, the law uses both terms pretty interchangeably. It's not uncommon to see in a criminal statute, the term purpose to mean intent. I can certainly see your question, and so I would say whatever the board wants. But the reason that the term purpose was used was because that's how it was defined in the other, the actual definition of a weapon under the criminal law. And its reference in that refers to intent. But whatever the trustees would like to express, I am fine with that.
Could we possibly then use intent slash purpose? I mean, it's, you know, if there's a question of it.
Well, this is, school law's not my area of expertise, but I think we either stick with purpose or intent. And Megan's right. In fact, the law's a little bit more complicated than that. Usually, you're doing something either knowingly, which means purposely or intentionally, or you're doing it recklessly, or you're doing it with criminal negligence. And so there are layers of what's going on in a person's mind when you're looking at criminal statutes. But I think just to give notice to the public, my preference would be to use purpose, because it, it's a more encompassing term than saying intentionally or intent, because then you're taking out the fact that someone can be taking, bringing something to take the risk, you know, a great risk that you're going to do something with it, but you haven't made your mind up yet, or something like that. So I don't, I'd rather us as school board members to not get into the really sophisticated levels of mental states that the criminal law has. Does that make sense to folks? Does that make sense to you, Megan?
Yes, I would not use purpose slash intent. I would pick one. And my explanation, like I said, is to more closely follow the criminal statute, and your explanation of purposely is a great example, is it's one form of intent.
So are we okay with changing the way the sentence is written to the suggestion made by cabinet, so that the phrase concerning state of mind, so to speak, comes at the end instead of kind of in the middle? Does anyone have a strong preference against making that modification? Seeing none, then Megan, if you want to go ahead and point out any other changes that were made in 3310?
The other changes I looked at were, they're reflected on page 23. And this is in relation to the discussion of gun-free schools. We had quite a bit of a discussion at the previous board meeting about the gun-free schools. And again, one of what I remember the board directed is to look at the statute. And so that's why I changed the term will or to shall. It's not a term actually used in the statute, but it's still a requirement that it says must. So I changed that to shall. In the next sentence, you'll see board highlighted, but you'll also see superintendent in parentheses. So again, based upon what the board directed, I went back to the Gun Free Schools Act. And what the Gun Free Schools Act actually says is that the board's designee, or the superintendent, they use both terms, can be the one to modify the requirement for expulsion. Now, previously, this board decided it wanted to retain that discretion. And, and that's fine. But I wanted to give you the option based upon what you as the trustees want to do as far as who is the decision maker with respect to the modification. So like I said, the statute does authorize the superintendent to, to make that decision, but it's ultimately a matter of board policy. And then I changed it to expulsion requirement, because again, that is what's matched in the statute. One other question came up, it's not addressed in here, but trustee Holland brought up the question about the hunting guns, shooting guns used after, before school. I went in and looked at the law, and then looked at the comments by the U.S. Department of Education. Because the law isn't as clear as we would like. Again, what modifies what isn't particularly clear, but the U.S. Department of Education said, here's what we're interpreting. If you are going to allow hunting guns to be used before or after school, you have to say so in a policy. So you would have to adopt language in your policy allowing that, and you would have to provide safeguards for that exception. My recommendation to you, completely up to you, would not be to adopt any language, because again, there's that allowance for a case-by-case modification. So if that was an issue, there's nothing saying that couldn't be something that on a case-by-case basis didn't result in an expulsion. But I will leave that up to you as trustees.
Any questions for Megan? Trustee Kendall?
I missed part of the discussion at the meeting on September 11th. So I apologize if this is something that we already went over in detail, but I'm, I'm a little unsure about the expulsion requirement and how that would be modified. Can you give us an example of, of how that would be done?
That example I just gave you, as far as a student has a hunting rifle in their truck that's on the school property, and it's in the locked vehicle. And it's discovered that the student has this, and under the law, it says that you shall expel. But then there's this other language as part of the law saying, the board or the superintendent has the right to modify the requirement on a case-by-case basis for expulsion. So in that situation, whoever is ultimately the one that possesses that discretion, if it's the superintendent, then the superintendent could make the decision not to recommend expulsion. If it's the board, then the superintendent would likely make a recommendation for expulsion, but that's something that the board then would discuss as part of that expulsion hearing.
So in terms of practical application, the language as it exists right now in policy reserves the right for the board exclusively, which means that in any and all circumstances, when a weapon is possessed, it has to come to a board hearing. The advantage, or potential advantage, to the board designee or superintendent having the authority to modify is in situations where it's clear there was not an intent, et cetera, that recommendation could be modified. We would not have a board hearing then on a possible expulsion. So right now, any possession of a weapon would require it to come, a firearm would require it to come here for a hearing. The language as suggested with the designee or superintendent having the authority to modify would mean we could prevent coming to a hearing if there were extenuating circumstances.
I don't read this that way. I thought it means that any expulsion has to be decided first by the board.
That's an interesting question. I thought it was the recommendation for expulsion.
Well, it says the board shall expel any students, so the only way the board can act is when we meet as a whole and have a vote as the board as a whole. Individual trustees don't have any power to make decisions, it's only when we sit as a whole.
Right.
That's correct, but the way I would read it, and if it doesn't say this, we can modify it, is that, yes, if you have a recommendation before you, well, under your previous version of your policy, where the board possessed the authority to modify the requirement, a recommendation would have to be made if it is a firearm. And remember, that's a very specific definition that requires an explosive projectile. And then you, as the board, could decide not to expel. So even though it says you shall, it says you still possess the authority on a case-by-case basis to modify that requirement. As an alternative that the board could consider, the superintendent could decide not to bring a recommendation before you, and then you're not in violation of the law for not expelling.
But don't we have to have the expulsion hearing?
Not if it's not brought before you, no. It's, it's, it's-
But it says the board shall expel. And we only can act when we're all together.
Right.
Right.
And under state statute, only the board can expel. The superintendent cannot expel. But again, where I believe the language, or at least my understanding, was that if I modified and did not bring a recommendation for expulsion to the board, that you wouldn't have to take any board action. There would not be any action on expulsion because there was not a recommendation of such.
Correct. So even though we have to expel, we don't have to expel, and if we give the discretion to the superintendent, then we'll never hear about it.
Correct.
Okay.
I wish, I wish it could be clearer, the statute is written in that way. So what the statute says is each state receiving federal funds under any title under this act shall have in effect a state law requiring local educational agencies to expel from school for a period of not less than one year a student who is determined to have brought a firearm to school, or have possessed a firearm at a, at a school under the jurisdiction of local education agencies in that state. Except that such state law shall allow the chief administering officer of a local education agency to modify such expulsion requirement for a student on a case-by-case basis if such modification is in writing.
Why can't we just say that then, instead of this really strange language? But, go ahead, trustee Decker.
Well, yeah, I guess my question has to do with exactly this question of who really should be the, the place where decisions like this are made. If, if this is something that we, that sort of generic, we have said is so important that we need to have a national law that is related to this, then the idea is that these decisions shouldn't be made privately without kind of public. Part of the fact of something coming before the board is that it is a publicly known piece of information to some, this would be private hearings and there would be no, hm.
Well, it would be-
But there is still this question of the public trust and all this. I'm just trying to figure out what the pros and cons are of it being handled in such a way that, for example, it could be that, I mean, we obviously want to be investing the maximum amount of trust in the administration who has been authorized to operate the district. However, you can imagine situations in which there might be a student who had had an offense or two of hunting rifle or three, when's the point? There are all kinds of, what, how does that play out? And how does it play out for different students? Are there issues of which students we take being a risk when they have, we find a gun versus which students we don't? These are complex questions, and I think all part of why this is something that is a board thing. So I just think we should talk about what the pros and cons are of this.
So that's why I brought that issue before you as far as who is that decision maker? As far as whether it's a public issue, student matters are, there's a right of privacy. So even the, the basis of the expulsion, you, you as trustees won't know. Now, that student does have a right to waive that right of privacy, in which case it would be done in open session, but that's not done until the meeting. So you wouldn't, you as trustees won't even know until you get into the meeting what the basis of the expulsion is.
Trustee Decker said a lot of what I was concerned about, because our reason for limiting weapons in school is for the protection of the general population. So not, it's not really about the rights of the individual that brought the weapon to school as much. And I feel like if we were to write our policy with the word, with saying the superintendent could make a decision outside the board, we're setting ourselves up for a two-step process where if the superintendent doesn't make the decision that the person with the gun wants, they could appeal to us, or the rest of the population that felt their students were threatened, and the superintendent made a private decision, could appeal to us. So I don't want to set up a situation in which someone can appeal the superintendent's decision around this weapon, because the weapon rule is for the protection of everybody else, not necessarily the kid with the weapon.
I was just going to say the same thing. The only time in the nine years I've been on the board, there's been one expulsion hearing, and it was an 18-year-old. So he waived his right to privacy, and it was held in a public setting. But the trustees both, both, we did it, you know, did the conduct he engaged in meet the requirement of expulsion? But then we, he had the chance to present the mitigating circumstances, which happened to be it was a hunting gun in the locked back, in a locked car. And so the board made the modification in terms of the expulsion. So I think that, it's been several years, but there was an expulsion for a period of time, and he couldn't walk across the state to graduation. But apart from that, he, he got to graduate and got all his credits, and he wasn't, his educational, you know, component wasn't impacted by it. But, so it seemed like, as trustee Lorenzen said, it's much more efficient, and it was a bigger discussion that the board had, rather than, you know, there's a decision that we never hear about. I'm uncomfortable with that interpretation.
I'm not. The only reason I brought it before you is the quest, the request that I go back to the statute and follow the statute. That's, that's why I'm bringing it to you. I'm not making a recommendation as far as that. I'm just telling you what the statute says. And the reason why it's written the way it is, is because what the law says is the local education agency, which in this case, because state law requires it to be the board, expelled. So that, so it follows the statute in that you first have the requirement to expel, and then there's the exception. So whatever this board, which is what the board, the previous board that looked at this statute or policy decided to do was to retain that discretion. I just wanted you to be aware that that is something that you can give to the superintendent. So that's completely for your discussion.
I think to address the pros and the cons, the only pro that I could see would be the efficiencies gained, and I don't know that the efficiencies gained outweigh the value in having the board vested with that discretion, so.
So can I make a suggestion? Can we go back to the original language? So it will say the board will expel any student, and the next sentence is the board may modify an expulsion period on a case-by-case basis? I'm just thinking, you can say will or shall. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to quibble about that. It's just odd, because shall in the law usually means it's mandatory, but the statute actually uses the link, the word will. So if we want to make it match up with a poorly written statute, will's a better choice. And if we want to, you know, like modify it, so.
So you said may modify the expulsion rather than the expulsion requirement. Is that what you said?
May modify an expulsion period, so the student has to have some consequence. Right, the student has to have some consequence, because the student should know they, even if it's a locked, in a gun container inside of a locked trunk, inside of it, something-
And it would include on a case-by-case basis?
Right, yep.
But not the word requirement?
Right, I would take that stuff out. It's the part that's crossed- Right. I would take that stuff out. It's the part that's crossed out, an expulsion period, that I would, because that's what's in our original policy.
Okay. I think, I like that better.
Any other discussion? So assuming that it's a friendly amendment where we'll just keep the policy the way it is, does anyone care whether it says will or shall? Any trustee? Megan, do you have a recommendation?
No. Well, I mean, my, my recommendation is shall, because it's stronger. But one other change, I just want to, I think the trustees had asked for cross-references, and I added those.
Which? Oh, right.
And those are on page 23, and it's just to the
Yeah.
Public policy on conduct on school property as well as the employee.
Thank you. Yep. So, so keep the shall, go back to the board and, and expulsion period as a friendly amendment to this section, since it's really just more or less going back to what was there. And then, Megan, is there any other thing you want to point out about 3310 in terms of modifications?
No, that was it.
And I appreciate all your work. I mean, when it did come up in real life, there were a lot of questions on how to read this statute, and it took, it was very difficult to deal with a law that's not well-written. So I really appreciate you getting into that whole legislative history. Thanks. So with that being said, and if everyone's okay with that modification, then the recommendation from the administration with those changes is that we approve the revised policy at this second, really the second second reading of the policy. And so with those changes that everyone's comfortable with, is there a motion to approve? Oh, this is for first. This is the, the second first reading, okay? Approve the first reading of the revisions, and then we, as we always do with modifications to policy that might be anticipated, we authorize that they be posted for public comment to see if there's any public response to the proposed language change in the policy. So is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Dugger. Is there any other board discussion?
I should have asked this question.
Yes. Go ahead.
It's more like a related question. How are students made aware of this policy? Just in a-
Through school code of conduct and in the handbook. And I would just point out again, the specific language on expulsion is not something that normally we would spend any time talking with kids, but just the student conduct portion, yes.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving for first reading the revision to board policy 3310 and allow it to be authorized, an authorized posting of the amendments for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present, and thank you for that, Megan. And then we move on to two, which is the first reading of the revision of board policy 5224, which is personal conduct, which is found on page 20, beginning on page 25, I believe. And so is there any, do you want to just remind us of the questions we had?
So the language added in number seven was designed to model the language in that bullet point we just discussed in 3310. So this was my attempt at trying to modify to require that purpose requirement, but I know that the cabinet had the same discussion, and the language on the handout reflects what they would recommend, and I have no problem with that. Like I said, it was just a matter of trying to figure out where the language should modify.
Is there any discussion or questions of the trustees about changing the wording to what's in the handout so it mirrors what we just approved on first reading in paragraph that's numbered number seven? Trustee?
So this may be sort of a quibbly thing, because I don't know enough about the policies to know whether this is specified somewhere else, but a lot of the standards in this list are applicable wherever an employee is, and this one seems like it's on school grounds.
I would say, to some degree, yes, that, yes, employees are expected to maintain high standards in their relationships. They're supposed to take a sincere and professional interest, and yes, that could presumably be outside of school. The issue is about possessing a weapon on campus, because the trustees can't regulate legal conduct off campus or off work hours.
Any other questions for Megan? Trustee?
So that means that it doesn't have to be specified because that's just commonly understood? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, you're saying because it doesn't say on school grounds?
Right.
Good point. Sorry, I didn't read it that way. That, I think, is a good idea, now that I'm reading it over again.
And, and, I mean, what about field trips? You know?
We could say, while, yeah, while performing duties on behalf of the district or on school grounds, because you certainly, even if they weren't on, on duty, you still wouldn't want them to be bringing a weapon into the building.
So, oh, go ahead.
Part of the reason that this came to light actually was a weekend situation where a staff member entered a building. It was not on work time, et cetera, but was in possession of a firearm. So I think we want to be careful about the while-on-duty reference.
So I was going to make a suggestion, since I think that these ideas are good, and I don't want to wordsmith it at this meeting. Would it be okay with everyone if someone wanted to make a motion to table this and, and let counsel try to grapple with some language that would be encompassing enough to identify field trips, off-duty time on school grounds? Okay. Okay, so trustee Wake has moved to table our discussion of 5224 to allow for some further clarification within paragraph number seven. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Dugger. Is there any board comment? Trustee Service?
I was just curious. What happens about behavior where they inflict harm on someone, like on their own time? I mean, is that covered at all by this?
It wouldn't be covered by this revision.
Uh huh.
I think it would be covered generally by this policy. I think you could talk about demonstrating integrity and honesty, courteous and professional relationships, responsibility to abide by state and federal law. There's a bunch of different provisions within this policy that would cover that, but I don't think that this particular revision necessarily would be impacted by that situation.
So any other board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment on the motion to table? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of tabling the discussion of first, of adopting on first reading 5224 to allow counsel to respond to some of the concerns or questions that were raised, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees. Then we move on to item A3, which is publications and distribution or posting of materials that's found beginning on page 27. And so, Megan, if you want to remind us of what modifications you might have made from the first, first reading.
Well, this one actually is going to look brand-new, because if you, I don't know if you recall, but there was the wrong version in the last policy. So let me talk about, that said, I did look at some additional revisions based upon what we had talked about at the last board meeting. So the purpose of this policy is about students. It's in the 3,000 section, so it's just focused on student, student publications and school-sponsored and outside student groups. So the first is the publications, and this is designed to give more direction as to material that would not belong in a school-sponsored publication. So you'll see the language that is recommended for deletion is a little vague and open to interpretation. The intent of the bullets is to give more direction. So you'll see where it's attacking someone on the basis of a protected class, looking at something that is endangering the health and safety of students, creating a hostile environment, or disrupting the orderly operations of the school, violating the privacy rights, material that's libelous, profane, vulgar, obscene, material that can infringe on a copyright, material that advocate illegal acts, or material that could threaten or incite violence. And then the additions below that are to also state that material can be also edited where it's inconsistent with the policy, or it's inadequately researched, biased, or prejudiced, or it's unsuitable for the school age. So there are certain topics that people can agree are not appropriate for elementary school, but they could be appropriate for high school. So it gives the administration the ability to edit, and that's consistent with federal law. Then you'll see the distribution and posting of materials. So this is designed to address two different issues. So you have school-sponsored groups, your BPA, key club, those types of organizations. And so, again, trying to give more direction to the administration as far as materials that can be limited, and I believe the board last time talked about making sure that there was consistency. So you'll see the same language as far as limitations as you see in the other part of the policy. So that's going to have one rule, that that school-sponsored student information can be directly handed to students. So you can go into a class and hand that out. But, and you'll see this in the policy to come, where it's not something that's school-sponsored, we want to make sure that the form is limited as far as not opening it up to anything and everything being handed out directly to students, because people could get the impression that it's sponsored by the school. In that situation, for outside student groups, then there would be a table or a bulletin board available, and the administration would review those materials prior to them being placed to make sure that they are consistent with those bullet points at the top of the page. And then adding a disclaimer to the materials about materials not being sponsored or endorsed by the district superintendent or school.
Any questions for Megan? Trustee Kendall?
Digital material, electronic communications and that kind of thing, that whole area makes me feel old. But I just wonder, when we are referring to written, you know, distributing, posting on a bulletin board, something like that, that definitely doesn't include electronic communications. And I just wonder, is that something that we consider elsewhere in our policies? I, I think it was, what, two years ago, Hatton went through major revisions of all the electronic media policies.
Those policies definitely govern student and staff conduct. They don't necessarily govern the electronic distribution of materials from outside agencies directly to students electronically. So that is not something that this policy here is contemplating, nor did those previous policy revisions contemplate other agencies distributing directly to students electronically. Because we're also identifying that we would not distribute anything in paper directly to students.
And the policy before you right now is student groups only. It's not other outside agencies. So, and again, I would just add a caveat that we don't supply email addresses, et cetera, to any outside groups for that distribution.
Any other questions, Megan? Megan, I have just one question to see if we might be able to do this. In the second to the last paragraph, it says student organization not sponsored by the school. And then the final paragraph, it says, it uses, it switches to the phrase outside student groups. Could we just lift student organizations not sponsored by the school back in there, so it doesn't look like we're adding, there's outside student groups, and there are separately student organizations not sponsored by the schools? I think they both mean the same thing, so we just keep those-
I, I have no objection to that, and thank you for catching that, because that was my, I was using outside, you're right, as a shorthand for not sponsor, but I agree that it should, for consistency purposes, be the same.
So everyone okay with making that modification just for consistency in language? Seeing no one objecting, then the recommendation is that we adopt on first reading board policy 3221, which has to do with publications and distribution or posting of materials with that modifying language that no one had objected to. So is there a motion to approve the first reading of the revision to board policy 3221 and allow it to be posted for public comment? Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? It's seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker.
I remember this discussion. It was really, really interesting. And I think that this is phenomenal work to try to put a lot of concepts into this policy that make a lot of sense. I think there's a lot stronger language here that really upholds the kind of community standards and ethics that as a school district, we strive to maintain and uphold, and also ensure that all members of the community feel safe and respected and don't need to be exposed to material that is demeaning to them. And I think that's really important, that we provide that kind of standard to administrators at the building level. Having said that, I think the devil is definitely still in the details, and a lot of these standards are, they are moving, I don't want to use the word targets, but they are moving realities as community life changes and evolves, and as we know better, we try to do better. And so recognizing that this doesn't give people sort of a recipe to follow for making these decisions, but it gives them nutrition guidelines, right?
Any other board discussion? I just want to echo what trustee Decker said in terms of taking the time to make, you know, revisions that make it clear to everyone what is and is not acceptable. It's, it's a lot clearer to me now in the form that it's written. Any other trustee comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the first reading to board policy 3221 with the modification, that slight modification that we discussed, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to number four, which is the revision to board policy 4331, use of school property for posting notices. And it's found beginning on page 30 of the agenda. So Megan, I have one question for you first. In the third to last underlying part on page 30, it says, "commercial materials," and then ends with the set, the end of the sentences, "such as graduation, class pictures, or class rites." Is it supposed to be something else?
No, it was supposed to be class rings.
Okay. Good. So let's change that. There. And with that change, Megan, do you want to kind of explain what's going on here?
The board was able to have a more thorough discussion at the previous meeting about 4331, but it was, again, a policy that you asked me to look at and revise. And so one of the things I, I did was think about the structure of the policy. So I moved some language around and put at the very beginning of the policy the sort of process, that there needs to be approval, and then these outside groups can put out materials on the available bulletin board or table. I, one of the issues discussed at the previous meeting was- One of the issues discussed at the previous meeting was the issue about parent organizations. I think it said, "parent organizations not sponsored by the school." I took out the "not sponsored by the school" because, as Mark mentioned, none are. And then, again, use the same language as far as the direction about material that would be inappropriate, as you saw in 3221. Based upon the board's discussion about the Jostens issue, that's why I added the language about commercial materials. And it was actually in the original version of 4331. And when you're writing all the rights, that's why I realized it was just in my head. And then just clarity about where this applies. It applies to both school property and school activities, so that if there's some event, there's not different rules that would apply. And then the same disclaimer would be added to these materials for outside groups. Trustee Decker had raised a question about the Montana Supreme Court case on libel. I did look at that. I don't believe it's impacted by this. That was a case out of the 70s, and it was an issue in the statute on libel. There was a remedy that they proposed, that there was a right to ask for a retraction. And the Supreme Court said, "We can't do that." So that's why they declared the statute unconstitutional. So I don't believe there's any conflict with the existing law.
Any questions for Megan? Seeing none, then it comes with an administrative recommendation that we approve the first reading of Board Policy 4331 with that slight change to change rights to rings. Is there a motion? By trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment?
Did we want to make that, use of that phrase, "outside groups," consistent with the...no.
This is truly outside groups. The other one were student organizations not sponsored by the school. So I think this is actually a really good use of that phrase, "outside groups." Does that make sense? I thought about that, too. And we have a seconded motion and no public comment. So all trustees in favor of approving the first reading of the revision to Board Policy 4331, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And now we come to number five, which is an elementary action item. And so it appears that the administration is asking that the board authorize, subject to successful negotiation of a contract, the completion of a boundary review process for the K-5 schools. Is that, am I saying that right?
So thank you. And the background information, as it's detailed in the packet, is, I think, fairly comprehensive. By the summer of 2019, we will have completed the renovations of all nine of our elementary buildings. And we find that, as we take a look at current enrollments, four of those elementary schools are basically at capacity. They exceed 95% of the target capacity that was established in Smart Schools 2020. Given that, and given that we have three elementary schools who are below 75% of that capacity once construction is complete, we felt it was timely to consider reviewing not only our boundaries, but also the city and county growth plans that have been developed, and to talk about properties that have been subdivided, platted, and their potential impact on the schools. It's been 13 years since the district has completed a boundary review. So the intent is to have a full and transparent process that would include meetings in each of the elementary buildings to gather some feedback to inform the process. We would put together a steering committee. We would contract with a firm to do data gathering and analysis for us. Then we would hold throughout the process at least two public open houses, one at the midway point to talk about initial recommendations, gather public feedback, and then a second prior to considering any potential recommendation to the board of trustees. The intent would be to move through this process entirely in the winter and spring so that we could come to the board with specific recommendations on attendance area boundaries in May, and if the board sees fit to adopt any changes, to implement in the fall of 2019. So I would suggest to you that there will be a number of considerations as we move through the process. Again, I think that largely, our student population in the K-5s may not be impacted, but there are a couple areas of town where there is potential for some significant change to boundaries, taking into account geography, roadside factors, and school capacities. So we just want to be fully transparent. We want to be very thorough. Rather than look at isolated pockets of the community, we feel it's important to have a comprehensive view of the community. And then ultimately, any decision on boundaries will be made by this board. I will add one other thing, although this is an elementary action item only. Our intent would be to come to the board during the 2019-2020 school year to take a look at middle school and high school boundaries potentially. So this would be the first step in what's likely a multi-year process.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Trustee Lorenzen?
It's kind of a logistics question. So in January of 2019, you're going to hold meetings at each, presumably each of the nine elementaries. I guess I wonder, will the advisory board be there and support the principal? I see this as being quite a burden on the principal, and will the advisory board be supporting them in that?
I would suspect that there would be key members that would. I would envision those, you know, at present to be more of a listening session, to talk about what are the community values, what parameters would they like to have the committee consider. So we would take that information in to inform the process. I think certainly it's an open process, and the committee would be invited to attend. But I think it's most important to hear from each of those individual school communities and not be overwhelmed by 19 or 20 members of a committee that descends on them. So we need to flesh that out, as Chair Holland indicated. If, in fact, the pleasure of the board is to authorize us to move forward, we'll negotiate with the potential contractor on what this entire process would look like.
Any other questions for Superintendent Thane? Trustee Decker?
January feels like tomorrow to me. And I, you know, I just know that families, even though a survey did go out electronically, many families are not yet aware that this is taking place. Lots of families who might be the most content with the way the boundaries are might not be aware that this is taking place because you would be more likely to be attuned to this process if you had had boundary concerns or enrollment challenges in the past yourself. And so I just want to ask what the steps are that we're going to be taking to really spread the word, invite people to know, and kind of seed their thinking before the meetings happen.
Hatton's finger is poised on the button of her computer. She has the message ready to go out to parents this evening, so the first blast email would go out tonight to all families. The question, and part of what we'll have to negotiate, is the size of the committee, and recognizing all the various stakeholder groups that will need to be represented on the committee without it becoming so large that it's unwieldy. So I think it's important to consider that there will need to be representation from all nine elementary schools, obviously certified and classified staff, administrative staff, et cetera, probably a trustee or two. So we'll negotiate the composition of that committee, but we will work to inform the entire community as early as possible.
Any...trustee Newbold?
Can you talk about the rationale for doing the elementary and the middle and the high school as separate processes? I don't know, but it seems like the issues are potentially intertwined, and so would it be of value to be considering them all at the same time?
I think, in my mind, there are a couple important reasons. Number one, by the summer of 2019, all elementary projects will be complete. That is not true for the middle schools and high schools, so they would not have capacity to implement. I think it's also important that we have some conversations, and again, potentially a recommendation to the committee or from the committee with regard to grandfathering students in schools in which they're presently enrolled. So I think just the dynamic is going to be a bit challenging initially. And I think to add the complexity of looking at all three levels at a single time might cause us to be distracted from our singular purpose initially, right now, addressing the capacity issues that we're feeling in the elementary buildings. There are certainly capacity issues in the middle schools, and there's a question about the disproportionate sizes of our middle schools, and that's going to take some extensive conversation. Right now, elementary schools, to a large degree, feed into a single middle school. That's not true with the current Cold Springs School. They're split between Meadow Hill and Porter. And so I think part of what will happen is we'll establish new elementary boundaries, and then a likely outcome would be, how do those boundaries now impact what we consider with regard to middle schools? And ultimately, the same question about middle school boundaries and potentially high school.
Any...trustee Lorenzen?
Is this a question to...I'll show you what I'm thinking. Why does this have to be done so fast? Is there a really critical reason this has to be done? Because you say it's the 18-19 school year, but in fact, that is going on half over. When I look at that schedule, it's like, wow. Even though we're trying to pay attention, it seems to have come on strong real fast. Is there an urgency to have this done by next August instead of taking a full mother year to do it?
I would say there are probably a number of reasons. Number one, transportation continues to be a concern, and we will need to take a look at elementary transportation. Of course, we've had the reduction of the block grant, and we're working to solve that now. And a question in my mind is whether or not change in boundaries might result in a change in transportation. I do think also, again, we're prime. There's no reason it would have to happen this year necessarily, but I think completion of the school projects and the relocation of Jeanette Rankin from the former Cold Springs location gives us good impetus to consider change at this point in time. It's always possible that we could go through a study and find, no, we don't find, in May we're at a place where we're ready to make a recommendation, we could extend time. Or the trustees might receive that report in May and say, "This doesn't look like something we can implement immediately." So I think there's the full latitude for that discussion. But I do believe that we need to initiate the conversations as soon as possible.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there, let me see if I've got the wording right, is there a motion from an elementary trustee to authorize the administration to complete a boundary review process for the K-5 schools that is anticipated to be completed during the 2018-19 school year, subject to a successful negotiation of a contract? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
You inserted the language that is anticipated to be completed, but it doesn't actually say that in this, in this thing right here.
It seems like there has to be a contract in place before it would be for work with someone who's doing the study.
Right, but this is huge. And so I guess I would like to add, propose a friendly amendment that we say, "to be completed before the end of the 2019-2020 school year, before the end of." It could happen faster, but it doesn't have to. So that's my, I propose we amend it to say, "A boundary review process for our K-5 schools be completed before the end of the 2019-2020 school year."
So having just learned what you do with what is perceived as a friendly amendment, we have a friendly, or what's proposed to be a friendly amendment, so we don't need a second on that, but we do need to vote on whether or not to approve the amendment before we vote on the main motion. So with that...pardon? Oh, sure.
Yeah, I just have a question. Could you restate the motion that you made? Because I thought you strategically inserted the word "anticipated."
Yes.
And I thought that would be adequate for addressing trustee Lorenzen's concern, that there would be some flexibility there.
Right. That's why I worded it the way I did, but if someone wants to...
I'm okay with the motion that you made, just...
So we need to vote on...we seem to need to vote on...
I guess because we have it writing, because what you said is different than what is written, we need to make sure we know exactly what we're doing. But I still hold, I still, even with the anticipated, I still propose my amendment.
Okay. Yeah. Actually, what's in here are just the recommendations, but I don't need to necessarily, myself, provide the wording of the motion. However, it seemed productive toward moving this forward, that I come up with the wording. So what Lenora writes down as to what I proposed as the wording, and then is what the wording is going to be, does that make sense?
No, it's in the PEC.
Yeah, no, it's in the PEC. Right. So you can ask her to read it back. Yeah. So everyone is really clear on what the original motion is before we vote on the amendment? Would that help? Anybody? So, because I have it written down here, that the motion would authorize the administration to complete a boundary review process for the K-5 schools, which is anticipated to be completed during the 2018-2019 school year, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract. I think that's what I said. Everyone got that? Okay. Trustee Lorenzen?
So again, I would propose an amendment to say, "be completed before the end of the 2019-2020 school year."
Okay. So we've got that amendment on the table. And so any board discussion of the amendment? Any public comment? If you want to come forward and if, state your name and spell your first or last name if it's a complicated spelling of a name, and if you represent any group or organization, and if also you can, we record our meetings, so if you can press the red light, or press the button so the red light comes on.
Hi, my name is Ginger Sillars, S-I-L-L-A-R-S. My concern was, I am not a current parent of a child in Missoula County Public Schools, but I have a child who will be enrolling in kindergarten. So I guess my kind of concern was, we recently moved into a school district, or moved a house into a school district in which we want our children to attend. So I guess I was just kind of here to hear the process and what was going to happen because I am not on like any sort of email list to get communications. So my question is kind of twofold in the sense that who would be on an advisory board committee, and if that includes any parents? And then also, is if, if there is a way that I could stay informed as not a current parent of a child enrolled in school, but somehow still be involved in the process, if that makes sense?
Any other public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the amendment to the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. That's one. It's trustee Newbold, Decker. It's elementary, yeah. Is it everybody? I can't...
It's all the elementarys.
Okay. So the motion to amend, it passes, and so now we did have a seconded...
Heidi did.
Oh, not Heidi. Okay. So trustee Kendall, all those opposed? Trustee Kendall is opposed. And so now we're back, did we have a seconded motion before the amendment? I believe we did, and we were taking trustee comment. So any additional trustee comment now, now that the motion's been amended in the fashion recommended by trustee Kendall?
Bring comment on the motion?
On the motion, yeah.
And this is the motion with the amendment to, to take an extra year. I think this is a hugely important process, and, you know, when we prepared for the bonds, we talked about it for years, and then really, I think, had a very successful outcome. And I think that this is another situation in which we have to keep telling people, keep talking to people, keep listening to people, make sure that we don't, well, we don't hurry the process, which now we're not going to, and that we take a lot of input. This gets people right where their hearts are. This gets people right where their hearts are. So we can't rush through this and we can't shirk from getting all the public comment that we can get.
Any other board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I'm, I did vote for the friendly amendment to take the time that's necessary and with that having now passed as our resolution, I would encourage the administration to consider as the process gets moving, what, to sort of be in a continual feedback loop about whether the timeline as it stands now is the right timeline. Because I think it may be that we do need more time. And I think to be attached to an arbitrary timeline, there may be some kind of drop point in the spring where it's probably not going to happen for next fall and that may be okay. Because I do think that there is a lot of emotion wrapped up in this. On the other hand, there's never going to be a really good time. There's never going to be a year in which people are going to be thrilled with change because everybody hates change and everybody's made plans based on what things look like now. And district boundaries have been determined over generations for a lot of reasons, some of them great and some of them not so great. I'll be totally honest, some of them not so great and providing real disparities in what's happening in our different schools. And so I think this is an opportunity to address a lot of things. So it's important that we get started. I'm excited that we're getting started. I just hope that we use that feedback loop well as we go forward.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, any additional public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion as amended, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to the elementary trustees present. And now we move on to item 10A1, and I want to thank Dr. Guest and her group for bearing with us on this rather busy school board night.
So we're going to totally switch gears and it's really exciting to come to you to talk about teaching and learning. And I'm really thankful to have some members of my staff here to help guide some of the presentation today. So we have Jenna Briggs, Lindsay Morris, and Sarah Scarston. So very excited to have them here. And in any presentation from teaching and learning, we always like to ground ourselves in the mission and vision of teaching and learning for MCPS. And the statement is, "We communicate, we collaborate, we think critically, and we create. We are Missoula County Public Schools, educational leaders in a global society, fostering uncompromising excellence and empowering all learners." And something that always just strikes me in reading this statement is that everything that we do is about providing and fostering that uncompromising excellence for all learners, whether it's for the adult learners in our community or our students. And so in sharing this, I hope these words ground you and help in understanding some of what we want to share with you today is about what we've been doing in teaching and learning at the beginning of this year and some data that really shines and shows that uncompromising excellence across some student achievement. And so with that, when we started the school year, we invited, oh dear, I might name my backup clicker. We invited Ken Williams to come and kickstart our school year. And this is the second year that he has helped Missoula County Public Schools kickstart the school year with very strong encouraging messages. Last year was about all means all, meaning that we are here to serve all of our children and ensuring that all kids have that uncompromising excellence and opportunity. And this year, he built on that message by saying, bet on us, that we believe that we have all the right teachers in the room, making the right decisions for our kids each and every day. And we believe on our knowledge and our skills and how we use collaboration through professional learning communities to really capitalize on that. And so we will bet on us. And so with that, he really challenged us to think about our status quo. And he challenged us to think about how we disrupt that status quo. And in the next slide, he gave very specific comments about, we assume nothing. We focus on all of our students so that we can ensure that they master those essentials for each and every grade level. And with that, he asked us a specific question. He said, how will we ensure that? How will we make sure that each and every child gets there? And when we say gets there, we mean meets that grade level standard or above, that we can ensure that each and every child is prepared to move forward throughout our system so that they can graduate and become vibrant citizens in our community. And so with that, we always answer the question with first looking at research. And we're in this amazing moment in education where we have a ton of research that tells us what's right and what's good about how we can best serve our children. And one specific researcher that we always lean to is John Hattie. He's from New Zealand and he's an international researcher who's taken a meta-analysis of tons of research around the world and showed us a hierarchy of exactly what we can do to make good decisions for our kids every day. And so last year, when we came to you and shared with you our practices around English Language Arts, we really defined a lot of what we do based on his research. He has very specific books out there for K5, 612, and across our entire system around visible learning, specifically in English Language Arts, as well as many other content areas. And so with that, what he does is he shares with us this barometer of influence. And the barometer of influence tells us, there are certain things that we can do and ensure to do each and every day in the classroom that will make a difference in the classroom for our students. And there are even other things that we can do if we're super explicit and concrete about, that we can move student achievement up one or two years above. And so with the barometers of influence, the next slide shows that, he talks about this hinge point. And the reason why I shared this with you is because we're constantly going back to, what are those specific things that we can do in the classroom each and every day to ensure that we get the students there? We ensure that we get the students to that grade level standard and above. And so he talks about this hinge point in all of his research as point four, meaning things that we do each and every day around that point far mark are going to ensure that every child excels one grade level. But there's things that can actually hurt and decrease achievement that we don't have any impact on, such as retention. Things like if we keep a kid back and retain the child, that actually has further decreasing achievement on a child's success rate. There's other things around some students that would just not happen in school, like if we track students in certain classes throughout high school, we know that that does not have good practice when it's, when we're trying to help all students. And then there's other things that happen in a regular classroom each and every day that we know are good, like inquiry-based teaching strategies or small group teaching strategies that we know are good and will ensure that every child excels. But after that hinge point is where the magic happens, when we can actually get very specific with our teaching and our learning to ensure that those students, especially those who are below the benchmark and below that grade level standard, that we can catch them up and catch them up quickly. And so in the next slide, one of the things that we've really focused on in the last three years is teacher clarity. And what teacher clarity speaks to is when teachers really know the standards, when they know exactly what we need to do for kids and we're very specific with the targets and the criterion for how kids can be successful, it can make over one to two years growth for certain students. And so we want to use those practices on teaching and learning and really excel in those to ensure that all teachers have that clarity so that when we bet on us, we're betting on that notion that we all know what is best for our kids. And so when you think about teacher clarity, there's three parts that we really hone in on. The first one is just answering like, what is it that our students need to learn? Specifically, we need to know exactly what they need to learn and our Common Core standards tell us that. The second thing is, how do we communicate that to our students in a well-intended way and make sure that it's very clear so our students know exactly what they need to learn? And then third, how do we show that they're successful? What are the success criteria that a student can say, man, I really got that, I know that, I have mastered that skill or that standard? And so when we bring our teachers together and when we talk about the things that are coming out of teaching and learning, it's all on this notion of teacher clarity. If we can build this amongst ourselves, that is that notion of Ken Williams' bet on us. And so the journey began, my very first year here on 2016-17, and Lindsay is going to share with us a little bit about that journey and begin to show you some data that explicitly shows the great benefit of this teacher clarity and the development of that. So if you remember when we came in in the spring and we talked about how we went in and did an audit and how many curriculums or how many materials are being used throughout elementary, middle school, and high school, and we had the really pretty not good pie chart showing all the different things. Then we went in to say, what do we need? What are the standards we're going to focus on? And then the STAR champion task force came together and they actually went through to decide that they needed to identify STAR 360. So what the STAR 360 is, it's a universal screener. So all kids get the screener. It's adaptive, so if I am a student with a learning disability and I start going, it's going to adapt to make me feel successful and then peak where I can, I'm struggling and then come back down. So we know where they are. It's not a solid, here's the question, we wish you luck. So what the purpose of it is, is we have the students do it and then we bring it back to our instruction. We know our results, we know what we want, we know where we're weak in. So with this being said, we actually take that and inform our instruction. So I'm, we, our kids are weak right here, I know that I need to focus on this area. We do it in the fall when they first come in, winter and spring, to make sure they're growing. And those students that we, our 5-10% that we're supposed to have that are, if there was a Great Pyramid, we would be progress monitoring. So those kids that in our system that are struggling, we progress monitor them with STAR to make sure that we're getting growth. So the disruptors. What we do with this is we plan the highest level. So if we look at a standard through STAR and know that we are very low in this, during our PD, we found some that we're like super low on, 13%, so the teachers decided we need to focus on the standard. So what they do is they focus on the standard and they plan the highest rigor so that all students get the high rigor of that standard. So we're going to do something fun. On page 43 of your board packet, we're going to be doing the, I noticed, so what you're going to be doing is going through the data of that one pager and look for what you noticed. Then you're going to also think about what you wonder. Your wonders are your questions. What are the questions you're going to ask? So in the first side, you will see that it's a grade, the grade, and in the middle is the problem of practice. These are the problems of practice that the teacher saw, that they identified in our PD, our PLCs as a district. And then they decided what standard they wanted to focus on. So I'll let you, I'll give you two minutes to look at it.
Let's not, we'll give my board break.
Yes. And at the end column, just a heads up, where there's two, it's two different standards. Okay, I'm going to stop you. So does anybody have a notice that you've noticed about the data given to you? Nobody has a notice?
Yes. I noticed that there's a focus on a need to improve in our informational text in almost every grade level. In fact, as soon as students seem to start doing better fluency, that's where we are.
Yes. Anybody else notice anything?
I would just piggyback on that comment. If you look specifically at grade two, there's a 15-point disparity between reading fluency as measured on the assessment and reading informational text as measured on the assessment.
Mm-hmm. How about any wonders? Do you have any questions while you were looking through it?
It says district-wide, so does that mean that you measured all this, say, all the online elementaries, all, you know, all the grades? And then if one, if one school has a different need than another school, do they still get the same solution?
So what we do is, they all decide on a need together, but the schools that have a need in a different area also focus on that to build that skill. So if they're working on, if it's a first grade teacher and they're like, we need to get 80% of our students here for proficiency, but we're going to need to work on this skill to build that, then they do focus on that. So our goal, when if you look at on the right, the score in the spring in the STAR, we actually have grown so much because proficiency is 80% of your class as a teacher. If you instruct your first or throughout the year, and you should have 80% of your students proficient in that area. So in some of them, we're super close, but other, others have shot up because these were areas of very big need.
So as Lindsay just illustrated, our steps towards this idea of teacher clarity continued throughout this job-embedded professional development during the entire 2017-2018 school year. So as we initiated our STAR testing and these PLCs gathered to, at the district level throughout the school year to delve into this data and think about their standards-based teaching and learning. This PLC work alongside the work of the K12 ELA Task Force focused on building, excuse me, teacher understanding of the depth and complexity of every standard. So through teacher clarity of the standards, we aim to teach to that highest level of learning in order to empower all students to demonstrate a deep and complex understanding of content. A critical piece in developing this clarity was the process that PLCs undertook to interact with the data. This process showed our current reality and also allowed us to make informed decisions regarding instruction and materials. So Jenna is actually going to explain and walk you through a data-driven dialogue protocol that district PLCs have used and continue to use across the district. Okay, so in your board packet, page 44 is the start of our district data dialogue protocol. So if you could turn to that page, we're going to work just through the first part of it today to kind of illustrate the process that we're talking about. So on page 44, when we look at teacher clarity, one of our first steps is to be able to take giant sets of data and start to whittle it down into something that we can actually take action on. This protocol helps us be efficient with our groups and it also helps us ultimately get to the clarity piece. We use this with all district teams when they come and meet with us for PD. We use this in buildings, in PLCs, and at meetings, and it really does allow us to become efficient in looking at bigger sets of data. The data that we're going to look at today is actually a sample of the Smarter Balance ELA data. The graph that you're going to look at is a bar graph. So it's simply going to show you at an elementary grade level, so fourth grade for example, it's just going to show you a bar graph that goes from 16-17, excuse me, 15-16, 16-17-18 for overall proficiency. It will not tell you individual standards, but it will give you just a broad picture. The number one, or excuse me, the first step on our data protocol is to make a prediction. So oftentimes, people ask us, why do we have to make a prediction about the data? And we do this before we hand out the data sets as a way of allowing the learner to get all assumptions out. So before we see ELA data for the district or before we see math data or science data, we all bring assumptions based on our school or our classroom or our own experience about what the overall data is going to look like. So what I'd like you to do on question number one is take about 30 seconds on your own and just put a prediction down about what you think just overall ELA data for K5 will look like, or 3-5, excuse me, because we're using Smarter Balance data. So number one, what do you think, what's your prediction about what you think overall ELA data 3 through 5 is going to be? ELA data three through five is going to look like?
That's our timer.
Okay, so that was one minute. The nice thing about the prediction phase is that it's really just about the learner. So it, we don't share them out in the overall group, they just give people a chance to acknowledge what they think data's going to look like before we hand it out. So step number two is ask us to state just the facts. So on page 48 of your board packet is a representation of that Smarter Balanced Assessment data. So the Smarter Balanced Test, if you remember, is a test we give in the spring. It's comprehensive and funded federally in order to just give us the big system view of data. So here we're looking at third through eighth grade or third through fifth grade if we're looking just at elementary. And we can again see those trends of 2015, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. Question number two of our protocol, we ask teachers and the learners to state just the facts that they see represented in the data. So in this data set, for example, I might look at fourth grade in the years 16, 17, and I would see that 55% of students are proficient overall in ELA. Those same group of kids, when they then move to fifth grade in 17, 18, become 64% proficient in, and the following, at the end of the following year. So again, excuse me, part number two, just the facts, asks us to state just the facts you see in the data. So we'll give you about three minutes to go ahead and look at those grade levels and record just facts that you see, and then we'll ask you to share them out.
I'm guessing some of us are not going to see what you're seeing, so why don't you give us a hint?
Oh no, we're literally just looking at facts right now. So yeah, any facts are perfectly fine at this stage. Yeah, we can, let's see, we have about like, does anybody need like another minute to look? We're good? Okay.
Well, if I'm reading it right, it looks like there's a big drop off between fifth and sixth. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, the proficiency level, so if we look at, let's say, 16, 17 and fifth grade, we're at 63% proficient. Those same students next year in sixth grade at the green level, or the green bar, excuse me, would be 58% proficient. So there is a drop that we would see in just the facts. The nice thing about step two is like, we're literally just looking at facts. And then question number three asks us to start making inferences around why those things might happen. But in stage two, we literally just stay to exactly what facts do you see in that data? Yeah, thank you.
It's always so important to be aware of our units when we're looking at graphs because of course, that's really only, you know, 10, 12-point difference, I mean, that's a big difference, but it's really not dropping by half, you know? Yeah. Just pointing that out.
Good point, yeah. Any other facts you see?
Well, there are, there's no one trajectory from grade to grade to grade. It looks as though some cohorts, as they move through, are dropping down a little, but then bouncing back up. Some are moving in a more or less up, 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 and some are, yeah, so there's, there's variation, there's not one consistent motion for each cohort.
Excellent. Any other facts? Then the second part of the data statement would then ask us again to make inferences. So this is where in the protocol typically, especially in a district group of teachers or maybe even a building group of teachers, they start talking about all the factors that the data does not tell us. So it doesn't tell us necessarily what program's being used, especially last year. It doesn't tell us how people are running intervention groups. It doesn't tell us certain, certain information about their blocks of time. So step number three allows the learner to really start to process all the different reasons why the data could look the way it is. Step number four in the data dialogue is then around our problem of practice. So a problem of practice, when we look at it with teachers, is something, is a problem that's represented by the data and that also can be addressed by the people in the room. So for example, in ELA, if we were looking at data from the STAR data, like that Lindsay showed you earlier, that was kind of drilled down a little bit farther. If we saw, for example, that research writing was really low across the board, so lots of students are struggling in research writing. And then we looked to our common tool, which would be our ELA curriculum, and we saw that we teach research writing at the end of the year, which is typically the same time that we're giving the Smarter Balanced Assessment. We, as the teachers in the room collectively, could decide to rearrange the units or to bring research writing in more throughout the year so that we would have a better shot at improving that student data. In that same data set, if we had questions about that we teach ELA first period and that we only have 70% of students attending at certain places when we start ELA, that would be a valid problem, but we wouldn't consider that a problem of practice for that group of teachers to fix at that time. So we do acknowledge lots of factors go into data, but we try to stay really focused on things that we can control and develop action plans around. The next step is the adult action. So once we've identified a common problem of practice, then we start to make our plan. So as teachers, we sit down and decide what are the steps that we all can agree to do and bring back at a certain date. And then finally, we monitor that progress. So as teachers, that's how we're gaining clarity, that clarity piece that John Hattie and Elise referenced earlier, gaining more clarity around, are we addressing that standard? How close are we getting students to that mark? Are kids that are higher and already know that standard getting pushed even farther? Are kids that were struggling getting closer to the bar? So we work on all those factors around progress monitoring to ensure clarity around the standard and also to build teacher self-efficacy. So we know that when teachers can identify steps that are working, they become more confident in their work and they see that their efforts have changed. And so it's an important part of the dialogue overall to show people that their actions are actually having impact on students overall. So as we are embarking on this current school year, we are continuing this process of these data-driven dialogues and discussions to ensure that teacher clarity while also renewing our commitment that all MCPS teachers have in taking our students beyond the bar. Within the research-based approach to curriculum implementation for sustainability, which we have adopted, we're fully into the implementation phase in ELA this year. So our PLC discussions throughout the year will focus on trying out the materials and instructional strategies, analyzing student work and participating in data-driven dialogues, sharing successes and also collaborating to improve practices. So in our K5 model of implementation, Lindsay and Jenna will explain what they've got going on there. So progress on the K5 ELA model, we started this summer training DAILY FIVE. So if you remember the model that we brought to you last spring, DAILY FIVE is just the structure, the framework through which we run curriculum. So it's a management framework that allows people to successfully run whole group and balance it with small group instruction while kids are challenged to do high rigor work while they're working independently. So we began training DAILY FIVE this summer. We had 230 teachers attend summer PD at various times, as well as in book studies since we've started back in the fall. So we run some after-school book studies that people are attending as well. We were able to provide two different levels of training, since DAILY FIVE is a, is a fairly common model already in a lot of schools. People were able to identify as a beginning learner and take the foundational parts of DAILY FIVE, or they could identify as an advanced learner and take some of the common pieces, but then do a lot of collaboration with other people that are already using the model. We've also moved into side-by-coach, side-by-side coaching with teachers where we offer to come in and coach them in their classroom or meet with their PLCs or take them to show the models of other teachers' teaching so that we can move the model, the framework further in as we implement.
Along with the DAILY FIVE is our Ready Gen. And in our Ready Gen, we have already had the national trainers in three times to work with all the teachers. We do bi-weekly newsletters that give us the teachers a focus of where they're going to go and what they're, they should be looking at now, and it's a great resource. We get a lot of feedback that they love that. It's quick and to the point. And we also have been having problem-solving sessions. So we've attended lunches at schools. I think we've hit every school as of tomorrow, and some schools were on our second, our second to third time coming in. We work in individual PLCs coming in, working with the teachers as a team to see where they're struggling and where we can go from there. And we also have one-on-one individual workings with the teachers also.
And the third phase of the K5 model is the ERLA. So that's the independent reading model that we're doing for assessment. That will roll out starting in November at three schools, so it'll be Franklin, Rattlesnake, and Chief Charlo. And they'll be first experiencing coaching from the trainers themselves from ERLA, coming in and meeting with them in large PD and then moving eventually into coaching in their classrooms as well. In our grade six through 12, we have been implementing our Engage New York. So all of our six, eight ELA teachers have implemented Engage New York. And we have about 80% of our high school teachers who have opted into the invitational implementation. So they are using this Engage New York as the core materials and texts for instruction for all students. And these Engage New York modules are sequenced, they're spiraled, they're content-rich curriculum and instructional practices that support attainment of those common core standards. The instructional coaching team is providing support through bi-weekly newsletters focused on implementation tips, resources, best practices, answering the questions that are coming up in our discussions with PLCs. We're also providing PLCs time to collaborate and problem-solve within their individual grade-level groups at their buildings. We're also inviting them to come and work with us in district-level teams. We're meeting with teachers to hear their successes and also to address their concerns. We've also confirmed implementation of subsequent models, modules. We're going to implement two subsequent modules in middle school and one in the high school, and these modules are aligned to our priority standards. So this all leads to collective efficacy. Teachers can meet together in their PLCs to discuss and support students because they're all teaching the same standards, using the same texts and the same assessments.
So when you look at the barometer, we look to this last notion that when we build collective teacher efficacy, meaning I as a teacher can make great impact in my classroom each and every day when I use these best practices that I know research tells me to use. And I believe that I can make that difference and make sure that every child does get there and reaches to that bar. And if you see, the efficacy is 1.57. So in the next slide, what you'll notice is a hierarchy of all of these influences. John Hattie says that collective teacher efficacy is hands-down the number one way to impact students and to foster that uncompromising excellence. And so in sharing all of this with you, sharing a little bit of data with you, showing that upward trend across English Language Arts and all of our grade levels is a way to show you that we have built that teacher efficacy, that our teachers have that clarity around the standards, about the measurement, the criterion that our students demand in order to reach that proficiency and to get there. And ultimately, we have truly taken on that notion of Ken Williams when he does a bet on us. And the last slide just shows us that we have disrupted our status quo. We continue to seek ways to improve and to be the best we can be so that we can bet on us. Because if you notice in the data, while some of the data looks great and we say that 60% are proficient, that still means that 40% of our students out there are not at grade level. It still shows us that 40% of our still students demand us to collaborate and to think differently on how we meet their learning needs each and every day. And it demands us to look into the research and think about how we can continue to grow that clarity and continue to support each other in making those really good decisions for our kids each and every day. And so this is the work out of teaching and learning, and it's hard and it's wonderful, it's challenging and rewarding, and it's all focused on this research and the notion that we believe in collaboration and we believe on each other to make those good decisions for our kids each and every day. So thank you for allowing us to kind of show you a little bit about what's happening out of teaching and learning, to share some data. It's the first time that we've been able to show you some data and walk you through some protocols and things that teachers just do on a regular basis. And hopefully you gain a little insight into their world and what we're trying to do when we try to make sure that each and every child gets to that grade-level standard or beyond. And I know it's been a really late meeting and I really appreciate your attention and your, your willingness to participate in some of our protocols that we do with teachers. I don't know if you have any questions right now, or if this is the time to ask any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Looks like no questions.
Will I do?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all of this. This obviously took a lot of preparation and thank you all for your work and for coming to report. I know that there was a great deal of interest in all the changes that were taking place and we asked for updates and it's October and we're getting one. And I really do appreciate that you're coming to share back with us how things are going so far this year. And I look forward, as the year goes on, hopefully to hearing the voices of the teachers on the ground in this feedback loop also and kind of hearing how things are going for them, possibly some people who have been pleasantly surprised, possibly some people who have had other experiences too. We really want to hear the gamut, we want to hear it all. I do have one question about the meetings because I do understand that what you were trying to walk us through was kind of putting us in the seats of teachers in those data-driven discussions. And I think it's, if you saw all of our eyes spinning a little bit up here, it really does reveal how, you know, highly specialized the language around making these kind of decisions has become and how complex and so on. I have a question for you about the meetings. The first couple of items on the data-driven protocol have time, very specific times for them. And the last question, the what adult actions will address, doesn't have that specificity and doesn't have a kind of a script that goes with it. And to me, that's kind of where the rubber hits the road. And I'm wondering, is there a menu of options that teachers are choosing from at that point? Is that where they're looking at the materials that they've been asked to use? What happens there? Because that's really where they're asked, that's really where they're deciding what to do.
Yeah. I think it, it doesn't have a timeline for sure. So the nice thing, at first, the timer feels weird to people, right? If you're in a room with four people at a middle school PLC, it feels weird to have the timer, but it really does keep you super efficient. And when you're in a room of 40 second-grade teachers, it feels incredibly efficient. But the adult action piece does absolutely not have a timer at any level. So it's really when they actively brainstorm around what they're doing. So oftentimes, if it's a small group, it's, if it's a small PLC, like a grade-level PLC, they just talk and start to lay out the exact requirements of their building. So maybe it's what they're doing in their classroom, what they're doing with intervention specialists, how they're going to monitor things and who's going to monitor them, but it is genuinely a discussion meant to take as long as it takes. When it's a group of 40 teachers and we're doing adult actions, it can vary. So sometimes we agree on exactly what the standard is. So we all pick, for example, like reading information 2.2, and everybody's going to bring that back. And the agreement is, is that you're going to bring like two samples of students who are struggling, two samples of students who are on grade level, and two samples of students who are advanced. And you're going to bring that work back to the collective group. And maybe those exact steps of how your building is going to do their adult actions can be decided at your PLC level. So it goes from the giant group to like your school-level group to decide those because those systems still look a little bit different. So at the district level, we'll talk about it, we'll definitely agree We'll definitely agree on the artifacts and the evidence that you bring back, but sometimes the exact path is laid out in their PLC group. Yeah.
Again, thank you for the work. Data-driven is always great. I guess I just have a question about how in the personal, or the professional learning communities, how special education and those departments fit in to those discussions based on the data?
Absolutely, that's essential. And what's exciting is when we get all of the second-grade teachers together across the district in one room, and they are sitting in cross-pollinated tables. So a Hawthorne teacher may be sitting with Russell and Rattlesnake. Sitting alongside them too are also all of our resource room teachers, our extended, our extended program teachers, as well as recently, speech and language pathologists have started to join us. And they're finding ways to begin to collaborate and connect, especially now that we have a common curriculum material. Now we're all speaking the same speak, and we can look to this one material and think about how we not only teach it for all students, but then how do we need to add some accommodations? Where do we need to reteach? We need to pre-teach some skills. And that's where all of the specialists get to come to the table and during that adult action time, really talk about their roles as an educator and ensuring that each and every child is getting what they need. And so that's been the power of these protocols, is because at first, we didn't really know how to organize that conversation. And now there's a protocol and a format from which to gather all those voices together to really make some significant impact decisions on our students. And what's exciting is, is when we see that data continually improve, it really speaks to that collective efficacy that we have together.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, although this is information only, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Well, thank you all, and thanks for staying late. I mean, through the rest of the meeting, we really appreciate it. And now we'll go on to the grant application summary. And I'll make a suggestion for any students who are here, since it's a school night, including you, Maddie. The rest of the meeting's going to be dealing with very routine things, some reports and things like that. And so if any of you have one of the agendas, you will see all the information that we're going to talk about, so you don't really, I mean, it's a good time to leak. Anyway, so thank you for being here, though, and thank you for staying so long. And so we'll move on to A2, which is to approve a grant application summary. And Julie, I think you're going to explain what Linda has requested.
I'd be happy to. So between Linda, Mark, and I, we've been discussing a need to update our on-call medical materials that, and we called it like a grab-and-go bag. I remember when I was the principal at CS Porter, we had these blue emergency bags. And frankly, the, all of the materials in them are super outdated and not functional. And it's, it was just time to be thinking about, as we're training for active resistance and all of these emergency-type situations, that we need a grab-and-go medical kit. So Mark tasked Linda to start investigating items to put in it, finding a kit that could be well-organized and clearly labeled. And Linda set to work and identified not only a bag, but about thirty items that would go in that bag, including everything from gauze and medical tape and to glucose shots, epinephrine, blood pressure cuffs, all that type of things that you could just grab and take to anywhere in the building or nearby if there's some medical emergency. So not only did she go about getting all this stuff priced and organized, but she also went out and found this wonderful opportunity to work with Missoula Community Hospital with a program they called Community Benefit Request. And this request aligns with their mission, and she is requesting sixty-five hundred dollars from them to ensure that we can build these kits and have them at each school or each student site.
Thanks. Any questions for Julie?
Is there a way to make sure that they stay current, like they don't expire or something like that?
It's a great suggestion. Now that we have devices such as AEDs and these type of mandatory updates, we have a regular checklist and timeline for keeping them up to date. And as we implement these, regular update and checking of the materials and going through them will also be implemented. Thank you for that.
That's, there's always something that you don't know yet, right?
Right.
So who in our buildings is required to be certified in things like CPR, first aid, first response?
That's a great, as we do have a crisis team identified at each building. And every year, we go through and find out from staff who all has been trained and is either CPR certified. And we offer multiple trainings throughout the year in the district. There are certain teachers and staff members who have to be, such as anyone, music people who take kids out of the building, band directors, PE. But we have a list of first responders and also anyone who's been certified.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the grant application that's attached to the agenda? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the grant application attached to the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And trustee Decker did have to leave because he's got his drive back up home, and he needed to get going. So we're on to B1, which is to approve transportation route mileage changes. It seems like as soon as we get fall counts, the mileage changes. Burley, is there anything particularly notable about the request to modify bus routes?
No, this is a routine. We do this typically every October, November, and then we do it again in February. And what this does, it allows us to get proper reimbursement when we submit our reimbursements in January and in May, and it gives us the most accurate mileage we have. Mileages fluctuate quite often in special needs, sometimes many miles per, even daily. So it's, this is the best way we can get the most accurate. When we have new routes, if we ever add new route, obviously, that comes to the board for approval. So we're able to do that mid-year as well. But this is something we get, we need to do for, as a routine basis every year to get proper reimbursements. This then goes to the Missoula County Superintendent for her committee, her and her committee to approve, and then it gets sent up to the state. So if you look on page fifty, it has a spreadsheet of those routes. And the only thing I'll point out about the routes is 20HCE. And then the two gray ones, I can't read the numbers, I apologize. Those three are CELE routes. So all CELE and, and Missoula area routes are on there.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the bus route mileage changes for the 2018, 2019 school year? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Sturvis. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the bus route mileage changes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now we come to two, three, four, five, and six, which are all information reports. Given the length of the meeting, if we can maybe have a three-sentence kind of summary? Because they're, they're supported by written materials in the packet, so we can all look at those written materials. So just in the order of efficiency, if, if it's possible to break it down just to like the one or two points you want us to take away from the report for this month, because we do see these reports on a regular basis as well. So we get to start with Pat.
All right, thank you. The, the first one on page fifty-two is the bond expenditures. And, and as, as you mentioned, Chair Holland, the, we went over this in, in August. And, and the only item I'd point out is that the construction expenditures from that report to this one were up about six point three million dollars. So lots of work going on.
Any questions for Pat? It's information only, but any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item number three, which is, Pat, again, about the general fund update.
Following that, that theme that's, that Grace had mentioned regarding the, how quickly time has gone by, this is our first quarterly report for the FY19. And really, for the general fund on both pages, fifty-three and fifty-four, there's, there's nothing remarkable to report at this point in time.
Then we move on to the technology fund update, right?
Good evening. It's a typical beginning of the school year expenditure report. Lots of software renewals, security certificates. That's pretty much it.
Any public comment? We've got one, a few members of the public left. And then we move on to the transportation fund update. Burley? Other than new bus routes?
And, you know, this is basically transportation paid through, it says nine thirty, but we had, this does not include the invoice from September. It's basically paying the invoices from August, transportation, so very minimal amount.
Then the building reserve update. Back to you, Burley.
The only thing I'll, I'll, I'll kind of note out is kind of what I talked about last board meeting, I believe it was, on the high school side, page fifty-nine, it shows the reimbursement for some of the electrical LED upgrades we did. So it's nice to be able to see some negative numbers in there coming back towards us.
Great, and thank you all for being so concise. We really appreciate it. And so now we move on to personnel policy negotiations, which is to approve early admissions to kindergarten for two students identified by initials. This is an elementary action item. Any questions before a motion? Seeing none. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the age waiver for the two students identified in the agenda? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Any board discussion? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of approving the age waiver for the two students, JL and TB, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. And then we come to item eleven, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Any additional public comment? Seeing none. We're adjourned, and thank you all for being here.